All right, we'll call this meeting to order at six thirty-three. Please rise for the Plaid Wigs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Craig here.
Here is you.
Schneider here.
Vaughn here.
Cummings here.
Or you.
All right, board members present. I do have in front of me proper verification. Meeting notices being posted. Fix us to the action of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are none.
There are none. Let's for a motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Coming to second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quaney, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. We will roll right into the action of approving minutes, starting with the regular meeting from Wednesday, July ninth, in the closed session. Any noted changes or corrections to set meeting minutes? I will move to approval. Second. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, July ninth, in the closed session as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. We'll roll into the regular meeting minutes from Wednesday, August thirteenth, in the open session. Any noted changes or corrections here? Craig will move for approval.
Cummings will second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve the meeting minutes as presented for Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five in the open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted.
I'm gonna abstain from that vote.
Okay, the motion will pass on a six oh one vote. And finally, the minutes from the special meeting on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, in a closed session. Any noted changes or corrections here? I will move to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dolphin, seconded by Ms. Quaney, to approve the meeting minutes for Sunday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, in the closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Take it to presentation to the board for this evening. Do we have any super representatives? Not aware of any being here, so we'll go to administrative reports, and we will turn the floor over to Mr. Bartelt to talk about fundraisers and overnight trips.
Nothing out of the ordinary that we've had in years past for the overnight fundraiser for overnight trips. A lot of the same ones that we've had, FFA's a heavy one. Again, this year, those days are all predetermined, along with our athletic overnight ones, they're all predetermined based on what tournaments are, and other competitions for that as well. So, nothing that's been requested, that really has been requested in the years past for those overnight trips. Fundraisers, again, it's very similar to what we've had in years past. Nothing is out of the ordinary than our coaches or advisors have done. You see, there's a lot of them from our different groups and our athletics that we have as well. Again, doing our best to realize that, yes, our community is awesome by providing funding during these fundraiser times, but also making sure that the families with it as well. So, wondering if there's like specific questions you have about any of them. I don't want to have to go through them all line by line, because there are a lot of them. You're welcome. But just wondering if there's any questions I can answer on those two pieces or two items at all.
Any board member questions?
They look all familiar. Thank you for affirming that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will move to Ms. Seaman to also talk about fundraisers. You have the floor.
Oh, thank you. So, I just came from our crew meeting. They are meeting here at school tonight. And for their fundraiser that's on here, they are going to do butter braids and coffee in the fall. They have done that in the past, and they've been pretty successful with that. And they are thinking about doing a new fundraiser for the spring, selling open units. So, other than those fundraiser opportunities, the student council will continue to do their candy grams and their penny war. And crew also always asks for cash donations to help out with three K eight. Any questions on that?
Here are any.
All right.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Beaton to talk about fundraisers as well.
Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, mine are very similar. I didn't have mine. I didn't work with her meeting. Christine did. So, my crew ones are the same as hers. So, I can add those in, or you can see them on Christine's. The only other two that we have are we do the American Harvest Association during our kindness week. We mostly do it for teaching kids hand-dolce CPR. We do raise money and get donations for like playground equipment, things like that. And then the other one, I occasionally, if we need money for the garden, we'll sell pickets for the garden. But now, we've kind of made that a second grade thing. So, we don't do it as often, but I wanted to make sure it was in there just in case.
Any questions?
Here are any. Thank you.
Moving right along, we're going to build a vouchers. You have in your packets, the treasuries report, superintendent listing of dispersments through August thirty-first in the district receipts, excuse me, for the month of August. Are there any unanswered questions in regards to any of those reports? I will move for approval of all three reports. Dalton will second. Okay, so I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Dalton, to approve the treasuries report, the superintendent listing of dispersments, and the district receipts for the month of August. And that is a roll call vote. Craig, yes.
Here is yes.
Dalton, yes. Schneider, yes.
Quaney, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Or you.
Carry on a seven oh vote. Announcements this evening, I'm aware of one. Our own Mr. Craig will be receiving some awards from the WASB for his participation in Region Twelve and the WASB organization. So, congratulations to Mr. Craig and you. That will happen at the meeting, the Region Twelve meeting, which is Tuesday, September thirtieth, in Sun Prairie. So, all board members are welcome to attend the Region Twelve meeting. I believe you could look through the administration of the school. Are there any other announcements? All right, we'll move into public input. Is there anyone who would like to provide public input this evening? Okay.
Do you want to go first?
Yes.
No.
We're after that.
Okay.
Well, before you start, I just want to, just a couple ground rules, if you will. We don't talk about personnel issues of any sort within our open discussion, and I would ask you to clearly identify yourselves so we can take record. And you have the floor.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Heidley. I had actually sent an email to the board members of the superintendent dated Monday, August eighteen. It went over my concerns for the three-year-old busing. I'm not gonna go over a synopsis of the email. You know, you guys all have that. So, you guys kind of know, you know, what happened, the sequence of events, things like that. I just thought I'd stop in. I saw it was on the agenda. So, I wanted to stop in and talk about my opinion about, you know, the busing and maybe some ideas to improve that. So, first off, it was concerning to me that there was quite a lack of communication. I didn't find out till, and I understand it's a new bus company. Totally get that. I understand there's gonna be, you know, some transitional pains, you know, things like that. But I actually didn't find out that our bus, our daughter wasn't allowed on the bus till the morning of when she was loading the bus. So, then that day, I spent time calling, trying to figure out what was going on. So, since then, there's been more back and forth. My daughter has since turned four, okay? So, now she is allowed to ride the bus, per the practice of Waterloo School District. I sent an email to get her put back on the bus, sent it to the superintendent, and then also Go Right Way. Received no response. I sent that email on September fourth. So, I received no response to that email. So, then I started calling Go Right Way to get my kiddos back on the bus. So, I made about five phone calls. As of this afternoon, I think that they're on the roster. Not sure. I haven't received email confirmation yet. So, that's kind of where everything stands right now. But again, my concerns lie with the communication, but also with the pattern of a violating policy. I know that there was just a statement put out regarding another issue with the school board. And then after seeing this situation with a three-year-old busing, it was concerning to me because it's another issue where there was a violation of school board policy. The school board policy states children of any age. That's exactly what it says. So, and I understand that per DPI, that the school district does not have to provide busing for three-year-olds. It's four K kiddos enough, right? You know, with the two mile distance from school, things like that. I totally understand that. And I also understand that districts can create their own policy. You know, they can determine if they want to be, set the standards that the DPI sets and use that same standard, or they can also, you know, be a little bit more lenient on the rules. They can bus kids within a mile of the school if they would like. But either way, according to the district's policy, they were invited, you know, it was violation of the district's policy. So, I wanted to put on record that it was a clear violation. I called in, I tried having conversations to rectify it. I was just told that it's district practice, that my interpretation of the policy was incorrect, things like that. But as a way to kind of help rectify the situation, in the Waterloo School District, there's one three K program, right? It's at St. John's. There's twelve kiddos in that class. This busing policy affected three kids. When I called in, I was told it's a matter of, you know, like financial burden, you know, it costs money, things like that. Totally understand that. But we were sending one large yellow bus, for I believe there were eight kiddos on the bus. The three, three-year-olds that this was affected were already at other stops. So, the stops were already created for siblings and for a daycare in town. So, it would have required no additional financial burden. But also, I see this as an opportunity for, so Waterloo School District is a smaller community, right? It's a smaller district. And I see this as an opportunity for the district to look at ways that they can meet the community and make accommodations. And in this instance, this is a small accommodation to make, to help, you know, the community members who have small children get their kiddos to school. So, I just think that it's something that should be put under consideration, that maybe we, either we amend the policy to say four K enough, or four-year-olds enough, or we start doing what the policy says and busing kids of any age. But if the decision is made to only bus kiddos who are four years old enough, I would implore you to think about meeting, you know, determining what is best interest of the community, not necessarily what is the DPS doing. So, are there any, does anyone have any questions, or?
Like, your daughter's in a four K?
Three K.
She's in a three K program.
Three K, no?
Yep. She turned four. She turned four yesterday.
Okay.
And you have an older child as well?
Yes, we have an eight-year-old. Wow. So, when it was determined that our three-year-old could not ride the bus, we took them both off the bus. Because with our family situation, I couldn't wait at our home, right, for the bus to pick up my daughter, then take our other daughter somewhere to drop them off so that they could get to school. So, we just took them both off the bus. We found people to care for our children and take them to school for us. It was, it was a pretty big inconvenience. And honestly, had I known that our daughter were not going to get busing, so let's say she had not turned four yesterday, and she would have been three her entire year of three K, I probably went to send her to three K, because it's not, it would be difficult for our family to, you know, find a way to get our kids to school every morning. Our kiddos are on the bus for a while, because we live out of town. So, they have quite a long bus ride. So, that's a big chunk of time that we have to find someone to care for our kids. So.
And can I just clarify, when you called to figure out busing with the district administration, you were told after she turned four, she'd be eligible for busing?
I was told that I asked two times, once she turns four, then she could be on the bus, and I was told yes. Yeah.
But there's still the other two parents that have three-year-olds still in the crowd?
Correct. So, there are two other parents who have three-year-olds at St. John's as well. I don't know the age of their kiddos, but they are, yes, it's still, it's still. You know, in this instance, I consider us lucky, right, that she, you know, did turn four yesterday. But I still think it's important that I'm here to like help review the situation and try to find a way to, that we can help the community and make this accommodation.
Because the way that the policy reads right now, because I looked it up, one's due Sunday email, it was stated in their early childhood, correct? Like, it said early childhood, right?
So, under, under eighty, so if you're looking at the transportation, the eighty-six-hundred, the first, the first sentence says to provide transportation for those students of any age. Now, early childhood is for students who have special needs, or they're, the school district is making an attempt to have the child get additional schooling to get them caught up to their peers, you know, things like that. So, three, the three K program my daughter is in is, would technically be like a regent three K, whereas early childhood is for kiddos, let's say, that maybe would have an IEP, you know. And then in those instances, if a child is determined to need transportation in their IEP, then it would be provided by the district. But in this case, my daughter does not have an IEP. They are not in an early childhood program.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public input this evening?
I have a little. I could have done better announcements. In the last month, all right, just a little verification, I will not be going to the meeting in Sun Prairie. I will be going to another meeting on Tuesday, October seventh, in Wisconsin Hills. And they are aware that I will be coming in to get my recognition and certification. So, that one is good. I did participate at the new teacher luncheon on Friday, August twenty-second. I always like it when there's free food, but I really liked meeting the new teachers too. It was, it was really nice. I asked the Spanish teacher, where did you grow up? And she told me Spain. I thought, that's a pretty good start. The agriculture teacher told me he put the cult in agriculture. We'll see how that works. We'll see how that would work. So, another fellow said, oh, I, my grandfather grew up in the Deansville area. I said, come on. Besides Mr. Hennig, who's got a connection to Deansville? Apparently one of our new teachers. So, it was great. Lot of enthusiasm. Folks that are happy to be here. Really a pleasure to get to know them all then. Today, I was at Mayville at eight-thirty for a community development meeting put on by the Dodge County Workforce Forum. And we had presentations from UW Extension about an aging population, Dodge County's workforce working elsewhere and moving in, remaining relatively stagnant. The Inspire Wisconsin Program, I happened to sit next to Mr. Bartelt, and they also discussed youth apprenticeship and GPS education program, where students and businesses are really linked up together to get them onto a good head start. So, a lot of discussion about trying to have the working environment help foster greater interest in the classroom and enthusiasm in the educational programs for those who just as soon not be sitting in a seat for six or eight hours a day. So, I was happy to be there. Pretty good turnout, probably sixty, seventy people there. Dodge County and a little bit of Fond du Lac County. So, very good. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. All right, we will move into new business. Our first action I make, staff positions, we have two resignations and a number of new employment positions that have been recommended for approval. Are there any questions regarding the staff positions? Included in your packet, you receive one letter of resignation that goes along with one of the resignations up for approval. Any discussion on the staff positions? I'll move to approve the staff positions.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor, Mr. Dalton, seconded by Ms. Quaney, to approve the staff positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Action item B is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six overnight field trips. I guess we heard a little bit of information from Mr. Bartelt. It's recommended that the overnight travel as presented is approved, as long as it does not involve students missing school. The district is setting the dates of the travel. When competition or event dates are not set by the district missing school, it'd be acceptable. Any discussion regarding overnight field trips?
I'll move to approve the overnight field trips as presented.
Cummings will second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quaney, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six overnight field trips as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Brings us to the action of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fundraisers. Again, Mr. Bartelt presented a bit of information there. You have included in your packets multiple pages of fundraisers. It's quite a few. It's recommended that the board approve the fundraisers, but potentially discuss philosophies surrounding this list as it's apparently grown here over the past few years. It's notable that a family who has students attending the school district could be involved in as many as twenty fundraisers in a school year. So, I can be concerned. Any board member discussion on fundraising philosophy, or someone would like to put a motion on the floor?
I think in regards to philosophy, like part of our issue is the fact that the state has not provided funding to education the way we needed to. So, clubs and organizations are forced to raise their own funds. I think that clubs had to be creative in how they could fund their activities. So, I would move to approve the fundraisers as presented.
Cummings will second.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quaney, seconded by Ms. Cummings, to approve the fundraisers as presented, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Before we vote, is there any further discussion? We'll take that to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Brings us to the action item D, referencing policy eighty-six-hundred, transportation of the three-year-old regular education students. We did get some public input this evening regarding said policies. It's listed in your informer packet. You also have included in your informer packet the official policy, PO eighty-six-hundred, for review or reference. So, the question here is, what would we like to do with our policy board members? Is the policy we have in place what we want? Do you want to make changes? How would we like to attack this?
I did go back and look at the policy, or the, when we were changing bus companies, and it did show that we had allocated maybe something for that age. I think it was on there of like what it would cost. But, yeah. So, I, I'm just throwing this out there, that I think the policy, when it stated early childhood, that has changed, obviously, since I went to school and got my early childhood degree. And so, I was surprised when this came up, that we did not allow three-year-olds unless they have an IEP. And if we are offering the bus company, if we are providing busing to St. John's, I believe we should be allowing for that age group. So, I would say, like, we don't have a three K program in, for Waterloo. So, if we supply the bus company to go to St. John's, and those three kids, I do think that we should provide busing for those three kids. And the class sizes are pretty small. So, like thinking, you know, next year, I think they had like thirteen last year. So, I don't think it's gonna be a huge number. That would be my thought on that.
Other discussions?
I mean, I don't see an issue with these three instances. I mean, it was like about, you know, that we're already stopping at this place, these three places, pick up these three kids with older siblings. I mean, if we host a policy change, what you do, I mean, I don't know that we'd want to provide busing for a three-year-old, they got a whole ride or something. But, I mean, we're already stopped there. They got older siblings. I don't see an issue with it. We could use the policy updates, in my opinion.
I'd like to think we could be a comedy and just pray that maybe next year, you end up with somebody where you're making special trips, and that pretty soon is costing the district extra thousand bucks, two thousand a year, because of, because of the change in demographics. I know it's, it's not easy, and it seems like common sense, but unless we could write a policy that says unless it's costing us money, we'll pick up your kid, but if it's gonna cost us money, probably not. That's not very fair either. That'd be a heck of a policy to read, wouldn't it? Or interpret, or to bad. So I hate to say it, but I tend to want to stick with that policy.
I think if we say that, though, we need to change wording in our policy. I think it needs to clarify because it does, the first line of transportation does say that we'll provide transportation for, for those students of any age. For four paragraphs down, it does clarify then, transportation on private school students eligible for transportation under state law shall be provided on the same basis as for district students. So we do clarify it, but it, it isn't clearly written policy. So I don't think we can hold to this policy regardless. I think it needs amending. So maybe it needs for a policy committee to review and discuss and come back to the board with a final draft. Because the way it stands now, it is not well-written. Yeah, we can't have best, like best practice. We gotta have it, have it written.
I would concur. If you rewind one verbatim, it says of any age, but then paragraph four, clearly states it's going to do the same as our district. So it could be certainly clarified.
In regards to a policy violation, I'm not certain we had a policy violation with the way it's written. I, I do agree with you, it's a quarter written policy, but I, I don't know that we violated our own policy.
It appears that the incident we heard about earlier, communication throughout was the, I guess, one of the sources of frustration.
Yeah. Yeah. It's understandable.
And again, the, as the policy, as, as we heard, we need to be consistent with unilateral application of said policy. So making an exception for three students this year, and if we have fifty next year, or we can't limit it to a certain distance either. We're providing the busing, we're providing the busing. So it has to be clear cut.
Yeah, I understand that too. I mean, this probably won't happen, but I mean, I mean, St. John's should probably be talking to our, our school or more aligning their days off. Their start times are correlated because we didn't rely on our busing also.
Okay, did you want to put that in the form of a motion, Ms. Quominy, or a recommendation?
I, I would encourage the board to, all seven of you are here tonight to make a decision. You want to bus three-year-olds or not? There's parents that want answers and to send it back to the policy committee for another month or two, and then the school year is half over. It's not that hard. Tell us what you want us to do and we'll do it.
I don't know why we can't just make it every year at the discretion of the board.
Right, that's kind of like review it.
The idea that we, that we have to do one size fits all in a community this size and be consistent year over year is, I, I don't understand why that needs to happen. So I think we should just keep the policy that we have with an amendment, an amendment to it that at the discretion of the board, we can add age groups that we so choose at any given time for any given reason.
Maybe a nicer, maybe a little nicer terms, but yeah.
Well, either we run the board or we don't. You know.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, I agree with you.
So, so that way. Consistents, constituents can petition the board to have their kids evaluated for it. And if it's going to cause an extra bus, then we'll probably say no. But if it's not a big issue, then we would say yes. I don't know why it's such an impetus for us to do that. I don't get it.
Maybe it's like every year we review how many kids are going to ride the bus at St. John's. And then obviously like the charities, which would just add to funding. Then we would have to discuss it further to figure out maybe.
I think then based on what Bill is saying, then we're going to have a motion either to approve three-year-old transportation this year. I would also recommend this policy, go to policy committee for review for your said amendment. Because that's how we have written our, our processes here as a board.
Yep.
So I think I'm fine with us making a motion to move forward this year, but I do think this policy needs to go with the policy.
Before we vote on the three-year-old thing for this year, is there any indication that that's going to cause a significant extra expense to us? Or is it presumably not an extra expense? Or are we not looking at it?
Yeah, I know Ms., uh, I'm sure she said her name was, said there was three kids. I heard as many as nine. So you're talking somewhere between three and nine kids, not a significant number by any means. You know, just the location of those kids, certainly if they're out of stop already with other siblings, then you know, that's no cost at all. If they're somewhere different or on the other side of the district, there's a potential cost there. But even, even that is not necessarily an extra cost because we pay, you know, per route. So if the route changes a little bit, that doesn't necessarily add cost unless we go over our mileage limit, which, you know, we do have some room on that. So you have to get a number of kids that are on all ends of the district in order for that to happen. So what I just wanted to be clear, because you said something early, Bill, you, you don't have discretion as a board on whether you haul ages four through twenty-one. You would only have discretion on anything outside of that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I.
I just want to caution that if we do decide to make a decision every year, this, the busing things come to the district so late. Every year we have frustrating parents and it's, there's so much, you know, I wouldn't say chaos, but there's so much going on that I think, I think that if you made this decision every year, it would just leave more headache for people. Be almost easier to just set the policy.
Yeah, it's a little bit for planning purposes, more centered around the timing. You know, because here we are after the start of school and having this discussion and, you know, depending on what that number of three-year-olds is, you could be changing routes or potentially adding routes or, or whatnot. So it, it just would be beneficial for the administration of the bus company to have that information early enough to plan accordingly. So, and then, you know, St., St. John's, I, you know, I don't know how quickly or how soon they have that information of who's going to register for their three K program. But that all has to happen in time for you to review it and then people react.
Yeah, I like Susan's point. You can do simply approve it right now for three, for the three-year-olds so that we get the current group in because it doesn't appear it's going to be an issue. And then we recreate the policy such that for upcoming years, either we have a petition process or a revaluation figure. I mean, I'm sure we can draw a little some language that will allow for some flexibility.
And Neola might have other transportation policies that have clauses in it. Like we have an expert group we could tap into to see how we could modify the policy.
And I guess I will. So to add three-year-olds to the current policy?
With updated policy?
Well, yes.
Cummings will second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Fari, seconded by Ms. Cummings. And we're going to clarify that motion before we take a vote here. Uh, incorrect me if I misunderstood you, but you are making a motion to allow three-year-old children to be bused by the district for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. And you're also kicking this policy eighty-six hundred back to the policy committee to create further definition for future occurrences.
You put it in much better than that.
Any discussion on that motion? Let's do a roll call of what I.
You want to start down this end? I'm going to say, uh, no.
Here is, yeah. Dalton, yes.
Snyder?
Quominy, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Or yes.
Okay, that motion will pass on a five to a vote. Brings us to action item E. Pay adjustment for game workers. It's noted that the high school administration is having a hard time staffing workers for football games. The pay is currently twenty dollars per person. And the recommendation is that we raise this pay to thirty dollars for JV and JV two games and forty dollars per person for varsity competition to assist them in finding workers to properly staff athletic events. It's recommended that this be approved. Any discussion regarding pay adjustment for game workers?
I am all about supply and demand. It takes raising the price to get the people in there. I'm for that. Do we have any idea of what other schools pay for helping out at games?
I think you'll find all over the board. I mean, I know of schools that, like people volunteer for it. I know of schools that pay pretty well. So we're certainly within the range there, but we did get that exact data for you if you wanted to.
No, I'm good.
Can I just get clarification on what game workers identify as, what that is?
Well, it's probably, you know, a good time for us to review all of our game workers, but the most immediate pressing concern was the chain gangs for football games. Those are the volunteer, well, paid people that hold the chains and the down markers for football games. So they were making twenty dollars a game. And we're asking to raise that to thirty dollars a game for JV and forty dollars for varsity. But when we, when we hire game workers all across the district, that does include ticket takers. It does include supervisors, game managers, clock book, announcers, spotters, team people for football. So there's a number of people that it takes to run a contest and each of those comes with a small stipend. So at this point in time, we're just asking for the football chains to be reconsidered, but we will look at all of them here going forward.
Just so those of you know, it's a school board policy in the, not only in the district, but in the conference that board members receive passes to the athletic events. So we board members can go to a game elsewhere and they don't even have to give us a senior citizen cross-site look. They just recognize that pass and then we go. It's true.
I will, I will move to approve the pay adjustment for the football workers as written.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Dalton, seconded by Ms. Gergis to, and just to clarify, the immediate approval will be for varsity football competitions to raise the varsity pay to forty dollars per person and thirty dollars per person for JV and JV two. Any further discussion before we vote?
Are we just voting for football or do we want to make it more across the board? Do we don't have to revisit this topic or?
All they're asking for is football right now, for if they want to. They haven't mentioned that any other sports have any trouble. If they do have some trouble, we're here for it. Well, for now, I just want football, because that's all he's asking for.
Okay, all those in favor?
I, I oppose. I don't oppose. I think we should get more parents willing to step up.
Okay, so that motion will carry on a six one vote. Takes us into action item M. Uh, and to just get an additional teacher, the Waterloo Elementary, fourth grade. Board member placed a request to have this reviewed with the board. Currently have two sections of fourth grade provided, data provided in your, for the former packet. The third grade currently has forty-nine students and class sizes of sixteen, sixteen, and seventeen, while the fourth grade has forty-five students with class sizes of twenty-two to twenty-three. It's not recommended that we add a fourth grade teacher due to budget constraints. Discussion on an additional teacher for the fourth grade.
Yeah, and just to give you some updated numbers, because we had a few ins and outs in the last few days, as we always do the first week or so of school. Third grade is at forty-five, so they're fifteen, fifteen, and fifteen. And fourth grade is at forty-three, so they're at twenty-two and twenty-one.
Did we have three fourth grade teachers and then we suddenly lost one? Or we always had two fourth grade teachers?
Um, this past year, we only had two, but at times throughout history, we've had three as we've sort of shuffled around to accommodate the bigger numbers that are coming through.
How are teachers getting along with the class sizes they got? I think it's been a week or so of the fourth grade teachers.
Well, I, I think teachers and administrators will always advocate for smaller class sizes, so. And I have no doubt that most people will tell you that the smaller the class size, the better that is. But it doesn't bode well for the budget.
What is the feasibility of adding a teacher right now? I don't think there's teachers falling out of the sky necessarily.
Uh, I, I think for an elementary teacher, you could find somebody, you know. I, you're probably not going to get hundreds of applicants, but.
We've, we've kind of helped to with that situation in fourth grade by using additional teachers from, we have a fifth grade math teacher who we were able to use to lower the class sizes for math. And then a reading teacher that we're using, um, so we were able to lower the class sizes for, um, the reading one. So we've kind of figured out a way around that using the staff that we have in, in, in the building for this year.
Thank you, Holly. That's what I thought, since I have a fourth grader and that's what it looked like in all the pictures that I saw.
And I think if you add.
Yeah, I think it's working out, it's working out fine. The teachers meet in the PLC weekly, so they're able to, you know, collaborate with each other, so.
If you add a third teacher, we have class sizes around eleven. And I don't, I don't know that we can afford to set that standard. I just don't think we have the budget to support that small of a class size in this district.
But maybe next year when the third grade class moves into fourth grade, that's something we're going to have to discuss.
And I think we've seen administration do that from year to year, right? Pivot students, teachers to different grade levels as those class sizes change. Because I feel confident that they would make that recommendation.
I do too. I like the flexibility that the teachers we have offered to take care of the issue. This time we're on the fifth grader, fifth grade teachers helping out the fourth graders.
Do we have a room for an extra fourth grade class available? We could do some voting around and make a room, yes. Looking, just curious.
Could we have to take action even?
If there's not any other discussion, any board members thoughts, we can move on. We do not have to take action on this or someone can motion on the floor. If you're done discussing and you don't want to take action and really things. We can move on. If I have a consensus of the board that wants to do that.
I can move on.
We will move into discussion item G. I guess it's been mentioned here already this evening a couple of times, but in the fall, the W A S B is holding regional meetings for school board members. All school board members are certainly going to attend and can register for the event. This year's region twelve meeting is on September thirtieth in Sun Prairie, starts at six P M. There's a pre-meeting workshop at four thirty P M. So board members, I guess it's noted, we've always had a decent attendance in the past. So you also have a flyer in your informer packets. You can contact administration to get registered for the event and we should do that here soon. I don't know that they put a closing date on registration, but they have to do a real count and everything else, so. Board members, by all means, if you're available, it's a good evening. Any discussion there? Okay, move along. Discussion item H, annual meeting. Just a reminder that the annual meeting and budget hearing will be held in this room, the community room, on September twenty. the community room, on September twenty-second. Budget hearing starting at six P.M. The annual meeting starting shortly thereafter, approximately six-fifteen P.M. Discussion item I, building and grounds meeting. Typically in the fall, we will have a building and grounds meeting to identify projects for the school year. As the committee is made up of myself, Mr. Dolphin, and Mr. Yurgis, all board members are certainly always welcome to attend. So we're asked to set a meeting this evening. Everyone has calendar available.
Do we want to get that done before the October meeting?
I'm sorry, I can hear your friend.
Do we want to get the grounds, do we want the grounds meeting done before the next meeting? Is that all?
Okay. So what dates do we want to look at, the optimal dates?
September, October, as long as I don't miss a cross-country meeting, I'm okay.
Is ten-eight an option?
Which, what'd you say that?
Ten-eight. Wednesday?
Oh, that would be a regular.
Sorry. Go ten-one?
I get two, ten-six.
I give you ten-six.
Was that a Monday?
Sure.
All right, I'll hope the brewers are. Ten-six.
Ten-three?
Ten-one.
Ten-one?
Ten-six.
Ten-six.
Ten-six at six P.M.
Ten-four.
Ten-six.
Ten-six, six P.M. Got it.
Well, it's better than ten-six and six-ten.
All right, discussion item J, the curriculum committee meeting. Again, committee members are Ms. Cummings, Ms. Kwame, and Mr. Fari. They're looking to set a meeting for that. You have designated a meeting, you'd like to do that. Again, all board members are welcome to attend the curriculum committee meeting. Going to review the middle school and high school course guide for next year. Needs to take place prior to the November fourteen. November twelfth.
Do we know what works for you guys? October first or fifteenth? October first?
First.
Yes. Yeah, October first. Yeah, the first or the fifteenth, actually. So we do the first, October first, or is that two, three? You're not on this committee, Charlie. You would be welcome, but you're not required.
Oh, curriculum, correct.
Yeah.
I just think, thank you.
Christine, is that, is that too quick, Christine? Does that give you enough time to work it out?
It's going to be quick, but I did say the fifteenth. We were hoping to have a parent night event with a group that's coming in from Jefferson County. So the first would be better for that planning purposes, but it will be tight to get course guides in.
What about the twenty-second? Or the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-second is parent-teacher conferences.
Just joking. What about the twenty-ninth?
I should be able to make that work.
The twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Bill's in there.
Okay. What about the twenty-ninth? They give you a little more time.
Yep. What time do you have?
Wow.
How long do you anticipate?
What?
How long do you anticipate we'll be with you? Half hour for your guidance, maybe, unless you have a lot of questions.
When do you get done with work?
Yeah, could be here until five.
Want to make it five? Does that work for you? Bill, it works for you?
How tall are you? Five, five.
Chrissy?
That's right. Yes.
Ten-twenty-nine and five P.M.?
Yeah. Charlie, what do you think of that day?
You take care of it, Charlie.
You too, Charlie.
I just might. I'll bring cheese.
That's it, I'm going.
All right, are there any future agenda items to discuss? Hearing done, I will make the motion to move into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, C, E, and F, for the, all the reasons listed under the agenda posting. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm sorry. It's all you've got.
Okay, motion on the floor by myself, seconded by Mr. Fari. The time is seven-twenty-eight, and that is a roll call vote. Grave, yes.
Yurgis, yes. Dolphin, yes.
Snyder, yes.
Kwame, yes. Cummings, yes.
Fari, yes. All right. Motion carries on a seven-oh vote. We are in a closed session. We will give camera crew ten minutes. We'll take a ten-minute recess, and we'll reconvene for a closed session.